Good morning. Welcome to the Santa Rosa County Board of County Commissioners Meeting. It's Monday, October the 6th. Time is 9:00 a.m. Please take a moment and put your cellphones in silent mode so we don't interrupt each other. I'll open with a word of prayer, and I believe it's... Whose turn is it? Is yours, Commissioner Salter, will lead us in a pledge? Father, we thank you for the privilege of coming together and deciding our own affairs. We pray that you'll watch over us and protect us. We pray that what was said and done here will be pleasing in your sight. We ask this in Jesus' name and for his sake. Amen.
Amen.
Do you have anything to add to the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no further additions today.
Mr. Salter?
No additions, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole?
No additions, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Litchard?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Walker?
No additions.
Mr. Andrews?
No additions.
Lee Oates?
Yes, we'd like just to add an information item on the Engineers Report. It's relative to a Regional Shore Protection Roundtable I attended last week.
Okay, we'll make that number six. Ms. Bell? Anybody down this way? All right. Economic Development Committee, Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any items, but I would like to make a couple of comments. Here lately, we've been getting inquiries from certain aviation companies about the availability of Santa Rosa County having a large hangar to help these companies expand. Large hangar being something that would be large enough to do rework on a C-130, and that takes a large hangar. Also, you'd have to have access to a 6,000-foot runway. Peter Prince is not big enough to accommodate that. One of our only hopes will be to be able to, at some point in time in the future, develop Whiting Aviation Park, and that way we can start to accommodate these large requests, plus have access to that 6,000-foot runway. So I just wanted to kind of share that with everybody.
And I'd like to add a word to that, since that's a subject near and dear to my heart, because I flew those things for a couple of decades. It is entirely possible that Lockheed will be interested in building a hangar themselves. And so that really lightens the load. That lightens the lift for Santa Rosa County considerably. We would still have to have the sewer and water infrastructure, but as far as 120 million-plus-dollar hangar, if it's their hangar, that would be even better, because they would be reluctant to leave it with us.
And we're working with them on that. Thank you.
All right. Administrative Committee, we have nine items. Item number one is discussion of three proposals received for Solid Waste Collection Services north of the Yellow River. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is the summary of those proposals. I believe they were opened last week and distributed to the board. Distributed to the board, and in your packet is a summary of the bids that we received. We received bids from ECUA, MOCO, Utility Authority, Waste Management Incorporated, and Waste Pro of Florida. And you'll see those that have been summarized across the matrix, if you will. And quite frankly, is the ECUA proposal is significantly lower than the others. On the north of Highway 82 boundary, which is the more rural part of the county, there's a $37, almost a $37.50 difference in ECUA in the lowest. In the portion south of 182, there's a $13.65 difference, if I'm reading it correctly, for the 95 gallons. I'm just going at that. And then for the total, it's about almost just under $16 a quarter per resident difference, per household difference. So you've seen the... You've gotten the proposals. We have a meeting set up with ECUA, their governmental affairs director, and the solid waste director tomorrow, just to be sure. Let's talk about the bids, look at the proposals, and just make sure that we're... What their process is, if you remember when we were involved with them with the recycling center, is we had to work out a contract, and then also in relation to their board. And so we've got to kind of see what that timeframe's going to be and how we can work in that. I'm just assuming that they'll be when chosen. I'm glad to answer any questions. I see there are a couple of people here that may want to speak.
I have a comment I'd like to make. Those numbers are significantly lower, and typically, when you see something like that, it's a loss leader, and they intend to double up and catch up in the out year. How long do they want to guarantee these prices for?
Of course, we'll obviously have to enter a contract. I believe that we said three years was the model that we had used.
Anything else from anybody, any of the other commissioners, before we open up the floor? Commissioner Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I bid on jobs for a living, and I've lost a lot in my life. And usually it was because the other guy was a lot hungrier than I am, or either they missed something that I didn't. So when staff does have that meeting, I just ask that they, you know, confirm that they've overlooked everything and bid on the same thing that the other two have. And also, I mean, if it was something that was really close, you have to look at the service of one place over another. But at these prices, I mean, somebody's going to be saving $150 to $180 a year. That's a lot of money for somebody to save.
And what bothers me is if they have to reneg on this or forfeit for whatever reason, we're the ones that are really put in a trick. And citizens of Santa Rosa County are the ones who are left in a real bind here. I am a little bit leery, just to be honest about it. I mean, if they can afford it, great, but point well made, you know? Somebody's overlooked something. Commissioner Salter?
Mr. Chairman, I had the same concern. We're all for giving the best value to our consumer, but when something is this far apart, I just want to make sure staff feels comfortable that ECUA can do what they're saying they're going to do.
And that's the purpose for scheduling the meeting, is we're certainly not comfortable recommending somebody that's, you know, that much higher than ECUA without some kind of reason that that could be done. We quite frankly were surprised that... I was surprised, and maybe I shouldn't have been, that ECUA would even proposed on our system. I assumed it would be the three providers currently... major providers providing service in the county.
Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we do initiate this contract, two questions I have. Will citizens have their choice between a 65 and a 95 gallon, or will we contract for one or the other? You have a choice?
Yes, you have a choice.
Right. And the other thing is, will there be anything in place if we initiate the contract? And they do have to reneg to any type of fine or bond or anything on that, or...
There was no bid bond on this, to my knowledge.
Commissioners, I do believe they posted a performance bond on the other contracts in the south end. I will confirm that.
Commissioner Williamson, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When we looked at the south end franchises, there was a computation that we had as far as rate raises in the future, and I think there was a percentage that they couldn't... There was a maximum percent they could raise per year. I just wanted to make sure we do have something in place on this contract as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think the contracts... We're going to try to marry those contracts up as much as we can, so that we have two identical contracts, or three. Two in the south end of the county and one in the north end of the county. And again, we're going to... We've amended the start date for the south end contract to January 31. So hopefully, at the end of this process, all of the contracts will be in lockstep, both in the terms of the contract and in the duration.
We're electing to go with two contracts in the north end, because the combined contract price was actually higher than each individual. So we'll discuss that further tomorrow.
Lower.
Yeah, lower.
Ms. Cantu?
Sandra Cantu, 9577, Highway 90 East, Milton. Are you going to require the companies to recycle garbage?
The proposal calls for, I believe it's once a week, curbside recycling that the provider would have to provide.
And what's going to be done with the recycling? Is that something that they're going to have to do themselves, or is that something that we're going to do at the landfill?
No. As in the recyclables that come to the central landfill now, they'll be processed, and then ECUA will take them to a facility, I believe, in Montgomery County, Alabama. So it'll be just part of the recycling material that we currently have.
I've done some research on landfills, and there was a comment on one of the sites that I found, said that there used to be like 8,000 landfills, and now they're down to 2,000 landfills. So obviously, somebody's doing something different than using landfills to get rid of garbage. Are we looking into that?
We are, but one of the reasons for the reduction is the incredible amount of regulations that have happened in the last 15 or 20 years. And you're absolutely right there. There are less landfills, they're just considerably bigger than they've been in the past, and hopefully more responsible with the liners and the safety guards that they have. But point of fact is, we'll be looking at ways to even reduce the footprint as we go through time. Obviously, surely, the technology's going to get better than the push and pack and bury that the landfill's based on.
Ms. Cantu, also, another reason that landfill usage is decreasing is the recycling. I mean, the efforts that we've put into recycling over the last 10 years have really... They've made a huge difference. If you look at the past three years, when we started the franchised garbage system in the south end of the county, our recyclables, I think it tripled just in a matter of months, because more people have access, easy access, to recycling. So the more that we recycle, the more that we divert from our landfill. And this is only going to happen in the north end of the county as well. So our recycling is going to expand tremendously.
Well, I use the landfill pretty often, and I a lot of times go and dump stuff. And I see all kinds of things that should have been put in a recycle bin that are put in the household garbage, for instance. People evidently have to have a reason to recycle. Can we make plastic bottles cost more so that that gives them an incentive to recycle, or cardboard, or do something to... Apparently, people need an incentive to do the right thing. And I asked before about making a tax on like plastic bottles for water, or cokes, or whatever.
And those are not things that the county does. Those are state-level initiatives and federal initiatives. I mean, if you look in Michigan, you have to pay extra. Look on a Coke bottle or a water bottle, and it tells you how much you get for turning in a bottle in another state. Florida doesn't have that kind of tax right now, but that would be something to talk to your state delegation about.
But that's something that you could initiate as a county commission, initiate to the state or the regional representatives, and then go up the ladder. Is that not true? Don't you all initiate information like that, or things like that?
Again, typically, those are state initiatives. We're doing our part, which is increasing our recycling program, and it's been a huge success over the past few years, and I anticipate that it's going to continue to grow.
Then as a citizen of the county of Santa Rosa, I would ask you all to initiate some kind of action to make it more beneficial for people to recycle. Is that a fair request?
That's what we're doing. We're going to put a 90-gallon green container outside your house, and all you have to do is drop your can in there. So it makes it so much easier for people to recycle and convenient. So that's why it increases participation.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I recommend we move the... I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't see you...
My name is Ralph Mills. I'm a...
Ralph, you got to turn the light on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There you go. It's on now.
Okay, sorry. Ralph Mills, Regional Vice President for Waste Pro. I cover an area of about six states, part of the footprint of six states, and do quite a bit of bids every year, probably do close to $100 on bids a year. Anywhere from, you know, just collection, landfill, a lot of different things. This bid with the results here with ECUA is just kind of problematic. You know, I've run these numbers every which way I can run them, and I just don't see how they're, you know, doing it for the price that they're doing it for. One thing that is kind of problematic, the north end of the county, what they call the section one of the county, has 3,300 homes. The south, or section two, is 19,000, or, excuse me, 29,000 homes. And they're a lot less density up on the north side, obviously, than there is in the Pace, you know, area. And actually, their pricing is less in the north end, which I just don't understand that. The other thing is, you know, we're required to pay a franchise fee of $19,000 for each one of these sections. Well, when you take 19,000 and spread over 3,300 homes, it's a lot higher. So again, I'm just asking that everybody really take a very hard look at these numbers, because they don't look right to me. As far as participation, what we did, because this is subscription, we had to kind of pick a number based on what we thought was out there between all the haulers. And we came up with a total of about 75% participation, is what we were thinking. On 33,000 homes, we thought we were going to pick up probably 24,000 to 25,000 homes. So that's something that I don't know if they assumed a full 33,000, but this is subscription. So that's the number we started from. On the productivity on the, on section two, where it's more dense, we were figuring being able to pick up 850 to 900 homes a day. On the north end, where it's less dense, we were at about 500 a day. So, you know, we have to look at all of that, look at landfill rates, look at the density and everything. So I'd maybe ask that you look at what they're putting out there. I don't know if they're thinking about automated trucks doing 1,500 homes a day, but they're not going to get that in either one of these areas. As far as subscription billing, and I don't know a lot about ECUA's business, so I'm making an assumption here, but I think everybody in Escambia County probably gets a water bill, and, you know, along with that, a garbage bill. Again, that's... They bill everybody. This is not like this. This is subscription billing. We have billing and collection issues. And any subscription that we do, you're going to have that. You're going to have, you know, cut off folks, you're going to have to bill and everything. So I don't know if they're taking the billing and collection cost into consideration there. The only other thing I have is just from a transition standpoint. I mean, we do this a lot, we know how to transition. If we were to be selected, we would have to open up a separate call center to be able to reach out to folks to get this done, reach out to the neighborhoods, the same thing we did when we did the south side. So I don't know... We do this, I don't know how much they do this. So again, what I'm asking is just, if you would, just, you know, be very careful and take a really good, you know, hard look at the numbers they're presenting. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else before we move on? All right, I recommend we move this to Thircey with... Here, no, it passes. Item number two is discussion of implementation of a countywide 700, 800 megahertz trunked emergency communication system capital project in conjunction with Escambia County. Mr. Walker, if you would, please.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is a memo to me from Mr. Gomigian regarding communications, emergency communication system capital project that we discussed for the last number of, really, years. I mean, literally since I've been here, we've talked about the 700, 800 megahertz trunk system. As you note in his discussion and background, how long we've been... The system that we currently has probably goes back to the 1970s. The technology probably goes back even farther than that, at least as far as the basic part of the system. And then we're moving forward, as had been reported at the last meeting, there's about a cost of about $7.2 million, and we'll go through a PowerPoint on that, and then we've looked at some methods to try to fund that. So would you project that? Roger, you want to move me forward? There we go. And then you see the benefits of the truck system, and these are all the items that have been discussed before. And we've got a number of people with... We've got people here from Motorola, from our emergency management, from each of the jurisdictions, it looks like. So I'm the least competent person in the room to be making this presentation, so I'm just summarizing what had been presented in the past. And obviously, the major benefit is the interoperability for all the agencies to be able to communicate on one talk group or on one channel, if you will, to use the wrong word. And also, it would provide a regional approach, would be an ability to connect Escambia County, Pensacola, and the Santa Rosa County agencies, as we're really all one region. The countywide coverage with improved coverage in county buildings, and would note that that was the item that when Mr. Baker and his group made the presentation earlier, they played portions of a... I believe that was a sheriff's call inside of a building. It was... It broke up. The channel degradation is just incredible, and this would give... Countywide, it will give much, much better coverage, and then the inner building, inside the building, specifically with the individual micro radios that deputies and even the firefighters use. The increased channel capacity, the ability to communicate with state agencies, and that's really a part of the interoperability. And then this is a long-term solution. This really is the next generation of what has been a legacy system and is expandable.
Questions from the board? I'm sorry, Zach?
No, sir. These are the... Is there new system equipment with site equipment, the radio recorders? You see the consoles, I won't go through all the information. Escambia County Master Corps trunking upgrade. You see the... One thing we will be doing would be to locate a six-tower, I believe it is, on the Mutsen School property. If you know, that northeastern portion of the county is rural as it is and partially populated, it's always been a difficult coverage area. Then you see the services that are provided in the Motorola proposal. And then this is the pricing that you see the seven... The bottom line, again, is had been reported earlier, was a $7,279,240 in... Okay, Roger. And then, see the financing plan, and taking the amount of the project, and if you took $2 million from your reserves, or from your... You would finance the five-point, almost $5.3 million. Motorola has a government leasing program at 1.79%, which would be $809,011. There's an annual maintenance to the system of $242,000. Currently, I believe, we budget about $145,000. So this would... That number's not as high, because we currently cover all but about $100,000 of that a year in our current maintenance. Then you see the total of the payment, if looking at that, would be the little over $1 million for the seven years. Then you see the interest paid over the lifetime of that lease. And if you did a 10-year option, it's the same numbers, same $2 million down. Then you see the 10-year lease rate would be 2.47%, same annual maintenance, and then you see the interest paid over the life of the project would be almost 3/4 of a million dollars, so just about double the interest, as you would expect with that much time. But it gets you a lower payment. But it gets you a lower payment in, in that regard. And one way that we had talked about, and I'm, in, in financing the, the new system would be the municipal services taxing unit. And this is based on the current number of nine, ninety-thousand-five-hundred-and-three parcels, which are currently taxed properties. They're not the exempt properties or any of these other, these are the same properties that generate your, your fire MSBU and your ad valorem taxes. And you see that, that at a, at a rate of around ten dollars a, a month, up to fifteen, you, you see about ten dollars a month would, I believe, would carry pretty much what you need to in, in funding the system. That's so close, you may want to look, as you go through the budget processes, is, is, at some point, it seems like to me, I don't know that you, you, you actually need to do an MSTU for that. We, we, we're, we're looking at that. I'm not sure we could take that out of the, the, the current amount of funds that we get, assuming some level of growth. But, but certainly, if you did an MSTU, this is, would, would be countywide, because everybody benefits from the communication center. The, the, the cities have their police and fire dispatched off of it, so, so do all the, all the county agencies. So, it truly does benefit the public service or, or everyone equally. I, I would expect that to go away once the, the system was constructed. We would have to look at how we were, what our maintenance piece is of that. And, and I'm not sure. It could all go away, but at some point, we could, we could talk about, I think there'd be a reduction in it. But again, you're going to be needing to take care of your system, upgrade your system as you go through.
I have a question, it's probably pretty elementary. But where do the nine-one-one fees we already collect figure into these computations?
The nine-one-one fees that we currently receive are, are fifty, I believe it's fifty cents per landline, and then there's some assessment for the wireless. Those, that, those currently go, go into the operation of your nine-one-one centers and then your dispatch operations that, that are getting countywide. Some, a source of funds that, that you could look to this would be your ICP or your inter, inter-agency communications program funds that are, that are generated by, I believe that's generated by traffic fines. We don't generate enough per year to, to, to take care of this, this particular amount. But yes.
Any, any funds, should there be, I mean, if there are savings realized, we could apply those nine-one-one funds towards this? Or is it, are they, are they earmarked for specific things?
I would not believe, I would not believe you'd be able to apply those, is that correct, Brad? They would have to be part of, they're part of the operation, they're restricted to operational.
Okay, all right.
They're, actually, they're restricted to the call-taking. If you remember in our budget, you see every year that we assign seventeen percent of the dispatcher's salary to the nine-one-one fund. And that is the designated amount of time that dispatcher takes in the call-taking portion of what they do. And so, those funds are very restricted.
All right, thank you very much, that was very informative.
And, and I did misspeak, misspeak, and, and the attorney reminded me. Is those parcel prices are per year, not per month? I mean, it's an MSTU that's on the tax bill once, so I misspoke.
Mr. Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad you just straightened that out because that had me kind of scared when you talked about per month. Current, current annual maintenance is, can you give me that again, please?
I believe the number is, you see the number projected is two-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars, and that's the, the expected maintenance. I believe we currently spend around one-fifty, or we, we currently budget around a hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars in maintenance. And that's the tower maintenance, system maintenance, just the things that go into.
This will be a contract amount, excuse me, and I'm stepping on you, I apologize. This is a contractual amount though, right? So, we're going to pay this whether that's what, what they're spending or not. We're going to pay two-forty-two, one-eighty-three.
That's correct. I was just saying that it, it is, is, we're already, we're already paying a hundred-and-forty-five thousand. That was all I was saying, I probably confused that more than I helped.
Mr. Chairman?
It did help me because I'm wondering if we're going to spend all this money to build a brand-new system up to date and modern, which I certainly think we need. We're paying a hundred-and-fifty thousand to, to keep up an antiquated system. Why would it go up a hundred thousand dollars a year to keep up a brand-new system? I would think, you know, a brand-new system would have least, less maintenance to it, and then maybe over the life of the system, that would increase.
I need one of the technical people, I need to speak to that.
I'd like to hear that. And also, I want to know what kind of warranty we get on a system like this, and also what kind of exclusions you have, like, they're going to exclude lightning strikes and different things like that, I understand. But, you know, I want to make sure we know what kind of, what kind, what we're getting for what we buy.
Yeah, we are currently paying CES Motorola a hundred-and-forty-five thousand, which includes all the maintenance, includes some other ancillary stuff that, that will be absorbed into the two-hundred-and-forty-two. We'll have to maintain our current alerting system for the fire departments because digital technology has not evolved to where we can alert the volunteer firemen. The firemen that's in the station, no problem, but the ones that are on the street, as the majority of our volunteers are, will have to stay with the old technology. So, part of that two-forty-two is also maintaining a small backbone of our alerting system that we currently have now. So, and also, you're in the IT world, so things have to, have to be upgraded and maintained, and that, that's part of that agreement with Motorola as well.
Now, Will, as Commissioner Melvin alluded to, this, is this a budgeted price? And then we'll pay out of the two-forty-two what they bill us for? Or are they going to get two-forty-two a year whether they do, you know, regardless of the amount of maintenance or, or work they do?
It, it will be, they, they based their proposal to us as we started this process. That covers the dispatching services, which is our consoles, which are in all the centers, the technical support, it keeps all of our security patches up to date, all of our, our virus software and all that. It keeps it current because, remember, we're switching from an analog legacy system to the IT world. So, it's all these new viruses come out, same as ALIDA has to deal with on our county side, they will keep us all current on that. It also includes any kind of infrastructure repair with advanced replacement, which is a large portion of that, about thirty-five thousand. So, basically, they're going to keep, we'll talk about a radio transmitter. They're going to keep one ready to plug in there while they send the other one off to get fixed, which is crucial to keep our system up and running.
Brad, how about, how about redundancy? What if something happens? Because I'm as impressed as everybody is with all this new digital communication. It's, to me, it's got its failures where old hardwire lines don't. What kind of redundancy or backup would?
Well, the best thing about the system design is if we lose all connectivity, it goes to what's called site trunking. So, central tower will be controlled off of a console at our center. The sheriff's side will go to a console out of their center. So, we'll still be, if, if we lose all connectivity between all the different links, we go to site trunking and the system stays up and running until they can fix that link. So, you know, not only do we have the, the connectivity to Escambia, we're going to connect it back to, or, or proposed is to connect it back to our center. And then if both of those fail, then it goes to site trunking. So, there's really three layers of protection on, on the system design.
I just, I'm sorry, I missed the yes or no answer in all that. The two-forty-two, one-eighty-three is an annual fee that we will pay? Or is that a maximum amount that we will pay? I still don't understand the answer to that.
That, that is an annual fee based on what they will give us. It doesn't matter if they come out, you know, five times or twenty times. It's a, it's an annual fee that we'll have to pay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Brad, this is something, either federally or through the state, that we're going to have to transfer in the, in the future. And then I, I think you and I had had some discussions of a date of two thousand and seventeen or eighteen, and is this something that's going to be mandated?
Well, I guess I don't want to confuse it and say that it's mandated. We have some obsolete equipment that in two thousand and seventeen, we will have to spend just over a million dollars to keep an antiquated analog system. And then you think about it, as we go into the IT world, those analog radios that we're maintaining now for a hundred-and-forty-five thousand, to be able to manage them and get parts for them, that is going to go up as well. So, it's not, it's mandated to go there. We have some equipment that in two thousand and seventeen, you know, we don't want to buy off of eBay. So, we, we have to replace, and it'll be over, just over a million dollars. And we haven't improved the system none. And this morning, for example, we struggled to talk to Midway. We were having an issue with the, with the south tower. And since we went to the narrowbanding, which is what started this, our system degradation, degradation has, has just showed its head. So, we know now that we, we have to do something. And, and I believe what you're referring to is probably somewhere on down the line, they're going to do another mandated narrowbanding, which I talked to you about, and it's going to take it from twelve-point-five to six-point-two-five. And if we're still on this system, we're dead in the water as soon as we do that.
And why is two thousand and seventeen the kind of magic number that we, we use on that?
Our consoles that we're using now are already end-of-life. Motorola will no longer manufacture parts or service them.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, do you have something to add to the discussion?
I would just say one thing about the console system.
All right, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Sergeant George Hawkins with the sheriff's office. To make you understand the gravity of the situation with the console systems, we actually had one position go down at the sheriff's office last week. A IT department worked for a week to try to find a computer able to support the old platform. And that position was down for a week. If I were to have more than one go down at one time, it would be critical for us. So, that's, that's the gravity of the situation in us moving forward.
We're not, we're not bucking this thing, we're just trying to make sure we understand the ins and outs of it because we're the guys that get to pay for it. Anybody else have a comment from the floor? Yes, ma'am.
Wallace Mahoot, fifty-five-hundred Cox Road, Milton, Florida. I, I think we definitely need the upgrade. I was just wondering, I know there's a, a seven-year finance and a ten-year finance. Once that is paid for, how long does the system last? Or does that depend on technology? What is the life of the, of the system?
Maybe, Tony, can you address that? The current system we have is, is how, how, how old?
Well, it's patched to get, pieces of it go back to the seventies, pieces of it. Piece of the, of the external, pieces of the internal and external equipment. But to answer the question, I think, and Brad kept, kept referring to the IT world. And so, if you look at, I think the, the, the component of this system that most likely would be the, that you'd want to talk about the life of, would be the software. That's what in any organization, whether it's the county or other organizations that are, have gone to the, to a digital world, seven to ten years is typically, you're going to enter some kind of software upgrade at that seven-to-ten-year window, which is fairly expensive. Now, I have no clue what that would amount to here because we, we're not there. But I would say that your next thing you would need to be concerned about, and someone, some of our technical folks might can speak to that, I would say in the seven-to-ten-year range, you'd be looking at software types because they quit supporting, there's the new versions as we're all familiar with now. You know, whether it's Windows eight, ten, whatever the number is, it changes. And so, sooner or later, your equipment kind of, you run into problems getting support for that old, old technology.
Okay, so, in a, like a seven-to-ten-year timeframe, you might only be looking at software upgrade and not the, like a total expense that we're looking at now. Once it is paid for, whether the seven or ten-year period is up and, and it's paid for, do you just, is the maintenance the only thing that we're on the line for? Until the system, you know, the life of the system is over?
Yes, I believe the answer to that would be correct. The maintenance, your maintenance and connectivity costs are what you, are your ongoing reoccurring cost. When I say connectivity, if you've got whatever hard lines you have connecting systems and any, any other hops that you're using to, to connect the system.
Okay, thank you.
Sandra Cantu, ninety-five-seventy-seven Highway ninety East, Milton. To follow up on her question and, and your answer, we've seen how equipment and software, all that information, you know, when we buy it, it's almost out of date. Do you have any kind of contract that says, okay, after we have the seven-year maintenance, the maintenance agreements from then on, upgrades from then on, and how much it would cost to upgrade the system at that time?
I don't believe we would have that, any kind of set fee for future upgrades. Our agreement, which we don't have a, a formal agreement yet, I'm sure within our negotiations for an agreement, one of the things that we would be talking with Motorola about I assume would be the upgrade features. And those typically may have a cost to them, some kind of guaranteed first upgrade or at no cost or otherwise. But those are things that our staff would be, and the county attorney would be working with Motorola about as far as that upgrade. I can tell you just from the, the, from the business side of it, you, you don't know exactly what the software cost will be until you, until you get there. You just don't, it'd be hard to predict seven to ten years out, just based on my past experience.
And with the number of equipments that you have, the handheld and mobile, any contract on how much additional radios would be?
I believe, Brad, you have some, some information on that, correct? I think it's part of, there is a certain amount is in this package.
That's included, most, the nuts and bolts of it are in the, in the contract. The gadgets go with this. We don't have to go out, if, if your question is, do we have to then go out and buy the handheld units and stuff or the stuff that clips to the law enforcement or fire stuff, that's all in there?
Just curious as to whether or not there's an established price. You know, I, I'm going back to the insurance fiasco that, that happened last year of, you know, a system that was supposedly installed and then nobody could get it to work. And you don't have any information about, you know, how much additional things are going to cost and that kind of thing. That's what I was concerned about.
Ms. Cantu, on the screen is the list of new system equipment, including the, the sites, the recorders, the consoles, the three-hundred-and-eighty mobile radios, the seven-hundred-and-twenty-one portable radios. So, that would be what, that's what's included in, in this particular project.
And we anticipate that this would get us through two years foreseeing increases in use? I mean, this isn't going to be the bottom, this isn't the bare bones.
I think she's asking, do you know how much it would cost if we needed to buy more handheld radios? Do we have that price set in stone? Is that your question?
It is, that is correct. That's stated.
How does this connect or is, is it associated with the nine-one-one system?
This, this is a, a featured component of the nine-one-one system.
And I know you all talked about the nine-one-one tax. I'm not sure what it is and whether this is going to be in addition to what we're paying as a nine-one-one tax on cell phones and so forth?
That exists now.
I'm sorry?
On your phone bill, you pay the fifty cents of Mr. Walker.
And that's supposed to be going toward our nine-one-one system, which is what this is?
Operating cost.
Those are restricted funds. The, the state restricted those funds when they, when the state designed and imposed the tax. They made that tax for a specific purpose, and that was explained to us about twenty minutes or thirty minutes ago, that the nine-one-one fees are dedicated to paying the salaries of the men and women that run the nine-one-one consoles. So, we can't use that money.
So, this is part of the nine-one-one system?
That is correct.
Mr. Chairman.
That, that gets my questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Cole, did you have a comment before we take?
I do, just some clarification. When I'm looking at this on a seven-year lease purchase at the percentage, and then I look at annual maintenance in total, I'm going to assume on my seven-year lease purchase at seven point nine percent, that annual, that's an annual payment. And it also includes our interest, correct? Okay. Now, can I back out of that one million fifty-one, one ninety-four about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're already paying? I can? I'm not?
I believe that answer would be yes.
On maintenance, we're currently paying about a hundred and fifty thousand, correct?
I think, I think the answer to that is, and this is a guess on my part, but based on the discussion I heard, that just goes away. So.
You're budgeting a hundred and fifty now?
Right now, so, so in actuality on that.
We were going to bump it up.
Yeah, but we can, can I back one hundred and fifty thousand out of that number?
Well, you could.
Out of the budget, I mean, that's all we're saying is we're paying that now.
I'm looking to find what new monies we have versus what money.
The difference between two forty-two and, and what we're paying now is going to be the increase. So we're going to pay what we're paying now plus to get to that number right there.
Okay.
And we're going to have to come back to you with that. I mean, obviously, that was the whole point. We're just trying, we, we, we're trying to let you know what it's going to cost.
What I'm trying to do is figure out which one of these annual yields on a per parcel levy would give us, achieve what we need to, to have annually for the new equipment versus what we are already spending in it. And correct me if I'm wrong, but if it looks like to me, the nine dollars and fifty cents over a six and a half-year period would pay it out, and we could stay with a seven-year, pay less interest. But Ms. Bell, if you'd do that math for me, I'd appreciate it. But from what I've done here, it looks like a little over six and a half years at the nine point five annual, backing out the one fifty we're already spending, putting that in this pot, we could, we could yield enough with that without having to go any higher.
You're right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Try to make this quick. Obviously, the system is needed.
Jim, you got to go through the routine for the record?
Oh, excuse me. Jim Young, five oh four nine Basin Avenue, Milton. This is way above my pay grade, but obviously, the IT world changes daily. This countywide communication system, it, from what I've seen in the presentation this morning, the proposal is to pay through it, through an MSBU, and let's just call it ten bucks a year per parcel. I would like to see this board take further consideration. This is not, this will be a reoccurring expense. This is not a one-time, it's one-time for this action. But due to the change that you will see in IT, programs, software, hardware, communications, I don't see this as a one-time fix. And I would love to see it, let's just go ahead. If the number's ten, eleven dollars a parcel, put it in the budget as you would in MS. And let's fund this program and put it to bed from now on, as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think we've pretty well covered this issue. We need to move on. Commissioner Cole, before we leave this, you got a comment?
Mr. Chairman, don't we have to indicate the staff or I?
We're fixing to do that.
If, if you'll go back to your, your memo to me from Mr. Gomayen, is this kind of a list of, what we see is the actions we need to take would be, obviously, you'll direct staff to develop a contract with Motorola, finalizing all this and making sure that we've, we've included the, the information in that. The, the, develop a formal request to Scamby County for the joint use of their communications backbone, if you will. Request the school board with the Mudson School site. Develop an MSTU ordinance for consideration and, and make sure we've got the funding, how that's, that's nailed down. And, and, and Mr. Young's absolutely right. We just need to make sure that we, we, we're, we're good to go on it. And then obviously, to, to move forward with any action with the municipalities if, if we need to. So there's a whole laundry list of things we need to bring back to you regarding this. And, and, and that's what we'll be looking towards.
And that's what we're fixing to ask you to do?
And, and I assume that you, our, our, I would, I believe our recommendation would be to go with the seven-year proposal as opposed to the ten. We just wanted to look at it of what it would, would amount to. But I think the, obviously, the less interest you pay and it looks like just the best arrangement. So we need to move this forward to Thursday with instructions to the staff to complete the details and make a recommendation to us based on the inputs they've heard from us this morning. And I do so without objection. Here, no, it passes. Item number three is discussion of the Shamaco Athletic Association Redneck Run using County Road one eighty-two, Webb Landing and Gin Road on Saturday, November the first, two thousand and fourteen, beginning at six AM. Details are in the backup. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here, no, it passes. Item number four is recommend the use of the South Service Center for overflow parking for the Gulf Breeze Zoo, Buick the Zoo event on October the eighteenth and nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Again, the details are in the backup. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here, no, it passes. Item number five is discussion of the annual Navarre Crew of Jesters Mardi Gras Parade on Navarre Beach, which will be Saturday, February the seventh, two thousand and fifteen. And again, the details are in the back of the book. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here, no, it passes. Item number six is discussion of a waiver of the nuisance noise ordinance requirements for the entertainment at the VFW Post forty-four oh seven at seventeen eighty-three Abercrombie Road until ten PM Saturday, November the first for the, for the thirteenth annual Bears Toys for Tots Poker Run. And I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here, no, it passes. Item number seven is discuss the cancellation of the November twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, and December twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen Committee of the Whole meetings and the November twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen, and December twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen regular meetings due to the observance of Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here, no, it passes. Item number eight is presentation on the two thousand and fourteen annual update to the local mitigation strategy and flood mitigation plans. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Roger, you've got my PowerPoint. Today, I'm going to give you our annual update on the progress of the local mitigation strategy, including our flood mitigation plan progress. I am the support staff for the local mitigation strategy. And of course, the purpose of this presentation is twofold. One, we are required as part of the community rating system through the National Flood Insurance Program to give you an annual update, as well as to keep you informed and the public about what we do and what progress we've made in this last year. Next slide, Roger. So of course, you know, mitigation is a term that is frequently used and can mean a couple of different things. But for the purpose of what we do, it's specific to disaster and what we can do to prevent damages and loss of property and keep, of course, everyone safe. And mitigation is important for several reasons. Next slide. You can see all of the items listed there. And for every dollar that is spent on mitigation, it is estimated that there are four, there's four dollars saved as a result. So the local mitigation strategy, the reason that we have it is Florida requires each county and their communities to work together to develop the local mitigation strategy plan. And we have to have this in place in order to be eligible to receive hazard mitigation grant funding, which you all know is very important in our ability to complete mitigation projects in our county. The local mitigation strategy does not have funding. We are a planning function. Next slide. You can see that the task force has a few purposes there. And again, the, the main purpose is to develop the plan. We identify risks. We look at different projects to minimize those risks. We prioritize various projects. And then we also work to identify various funding sources and match up those sources to projects. And it does require representation from each of our cities. And we do have community participation. The next meeting will be October twenty-third, and that's going to be a critical meeting for our mitigation progress, and I'll go over that in just a second. The plan that we talk, talk about is a five-year plan. And this is just some information about the current plan in place. We will be coming up on our five-year update, and that is an eighteen-month process that we will start at the end of this year. And in addition, we also provide an annual update to the state on our progress. So in this last year, you can see some of the, the accomplishments. We've continued working with Rebuild Northwest Florida to harden homes in our county. And in June of this year, the figure they had given us is that we have mitigated one thousand one hundred and eighty-two homes in Santa Rosa County since the inception of Rebuild Northwest Florida after the oh-four and oh-five disasters. About half of those are in the south end and the other half are in the central and north part of the county. We also completed two sewer projects in this last year with community development block grant funding. City of Milton completed several of their projects you can see listed. We have a couple of projects that will be nearing completion in the upcoming year. Next slide. And that is the Ramblewood Drive Project, which has been underway for quite some time. But it is good that that one is finally wrapping up. And we do expect that that neighborhood will, will benefit tremendously from that project. Another big one that you hear a lot about is the Settlers Colony. We are wrapping up design of that project. And there are funds from that Tropical Storm Debbie disaster that have been allocated for construction. At this point, we're not sure if there will be enough funds in place to fully fund that project. But we have requested that if there are remaining tier funding available, that it be applied to that project. So probably within the next six months, we'll come back to you with that grant agreement for construction for Settlers Colony. And at that time, we will let you know what shortfalls there may be in terms of funding for that project. The next slide is projects that we expect to start or complete in this upcoming year. And you can see there again, Settlers Colony should be under construction. We do have one property that we will elevate in Milton, and that grant agreement should be on your agenda at the next meeting. We also have three other properties that FEMA has indicated will be approved. So that will probably happen sometime next year as well. Of course, Rebuild continues to harden homes. I believe they have over three hundred right now that they have in progress, an additional three hundred homes. Holly by the Sea Master Stormwater Drainage Plan. It's my understanding there may be some preliminary data available by the end of this calendar year, but that the full study will be complete in sometime in two thousand and fifteen. And that will result in specific mitigation projects that will be moved through the LMS process. City of Gulf Breeze recently started a construction project that includes Nightingale Lane and Fairpoint Drive. As a result of the April thirtieth flooding event in which we were included in the disaster declaration, hazard mitigation grant funding follows the disaster. And our allocation for the county right now is currently three million dollars. And that figure, it actually includes both the federal and local share. I, I believe that when they have the six-month lock-in figures, that our amount could potentially be higher than that. I believe that the Public Assistance Program figures are still being totaled. So I think that that number in general is going to go up based on those figures. And we, the LMS is currently working to review twenty-plus new project nominations for consideration of that three million dollars. So our timeline is, next slide, Roger. Right now, we are working with Pegasus. You approved a proposal from them last board meeting to assist us in this project. We expect to score those projects. The LMS will meet on October twenty-third and rank those projects for funding. We will bring that recommendation forward to you at the November tenth meeting. We will let you know which projects that the county will be applying for and have you identify matching funds. As you know, it's a twenty-five percent match, which can be met in cash or in kind. And when applicable, we, we do utilize those in-kind resources. And as you know, the process can be slow. Once the application is submitted in January, could take up to eighteen months to get an approval. It does seem that they may be moving a little bit quicker this last year, I've noticed. So that could be a good sign for the future. Next slide. This is just a little bit of information about our community rating system and flood insurance. And as you know, our flood plain management department is very proactive in implementing various flood insurance activities. And we do have a rating of five, which is one of the best in the state of Florida, which results in a twenty-five percent discounts to our flood insurance policy holders. You can see there that the City of Milton and Gulf Breeze are class six. And this year, Karen and other staff educated approximately one hundred and fifty realtors on the importance of flood plain management and flood insurance. And her, along with emergency management, participated in the Safer Expo for the fourth consecutive year. Next slide is several of the CRS goals that we are working on. We will, of course, maintain our current rating of class five. Although it may be a big, big goal to accomplish a class four, we will, you know, work towards that. We will participate again in flood insurance, or excuse me, National Flood Safety Week in March of this upcoming year. And we did have our kickoff meeting last Thursday for the FEMA High Water Mark Initiative. We identified several potential sign locations. And we will be bringing that back to the board for your final blessing. But we did discuss putting those signs in public places such as parks, community, or excuse me, public buildings, those areas that there would not be any negative impacts to private property. We are also looking at having the launch event, which is basically a media event at the beginning of December. So you'll hear more about that soon. Our repetitive loss property list, of course, we've got several properties, but we do continue to work towards mitigating those on a, both an individual basis, but also, you know, completing stormwater drainage projects in those areas in which these repetitive loss properties are concentrated. But you can see there, since two thousand and eight, we have worked with sixteen properties. And we have gotten eight of those mitigated. And I mentioned earlier the four that are coming up. And we will actually be resubmitting the three that were not funded in, possibly in this hazard mitigation grant cycle. So we'll continue to work on that on an annual basis. Next slide. So a little bit about our flood mitigation plan. You could see there, we got it approved in June. And we meet annually to discuss the, the evaluation of the plan. And that meeting was advertised. We have placed the report on the website for the public. And that plan will actually be updated. And that plan will actually be updated in conjunction with the LMS plan in December 2014. And a review of the plan indicates that overall, it was effective, and we will be making revisions in conjunction with the five-year update. Some of these will reflect the new CRS requirements. Next slide, Roger. And just one note, the Public Outreach Plan, which is basically our plan for public education, will be changing to be called a Plan for Public Information. And then, of course, we did discuss the April 2014 flooding event and areas of concern for the LMS to concentrate on. And overall, we felt like the action plan was successfully addressed, and that those items we had identified are being pursued or effectively completed on an annual basis. So for the future, just a couple of items. We do expect the new flood insurance rate maps to come out in the middle of next year, and it's our understanding that there will be plenty of public involvement in that process. They will have meetings where they will show the preliminary maps and let the public see those and have input to that. Of course, Flood Plain Management Office has been involved in that process. We would like to continue to encourage anyone in the community, residents, non-governmental agencies, businesses, anyone that wants to participate in the local mitigation strategy. To do so, those meetings are open to the public. We will also continue to encourage our homeowners to retrofit their homes. Rebuild Northwest Florida has their application process currently open. Anyone that's interested in that should reach out to them to get on their list. Also, we will work with our partners to identify and secure funding sources. And I think one of our biggest things will be to continue to educate the public regarding the purchase of flood insurance for all areas. And the last slide, basically, that's our website where there's all our information. And then another important note is that we encourage residents to complete the online damage form in the event of flooding or disasters. That form can be found at any one of those pages, Emergency Management, Flood Management, the LMS page, and Road and Bridge pages, and it's just an online form where residents can list the date of the impact, how much flooding they had, and that helps us gather the information that we need for mitigation grants. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman. Through the chair, Sheila, thanks very much for staying on top of this, because I know about 12 years ago, we got behind on this and had even bringing a consultant to get this LMS plan up to date again. So I appreciate you staying on top of keeping us current with that. One question for you. You know, I know a lot on this, we focus on flooding and, you know, but it is all disasters. And I remember at the time, there was even consideration for smoke modeling for, say, a forest fire or something like that. Do we still look at those categories or different areas of disaster, just focus on flooding because that's more prone, or are they pretty much fallen out of the LMS?
No, the local mitigation certainly isn't all hazards plan, but you could say that, you know, depending on the historical trends, we focus on projects that mitigate those disasters. For instance, after Ivan and Dennis, we were very much focused on hardening. We did a lot of county buildings, got shutters, elevated a lot of the lift stations out of, you know, on the beach to prevent flooding. So it's safe to say that a lot of those projects that we did complete after Ivan and Dennis were, you know, both hurricane and flooding related. And of course, the last few years, we've mainly had flooding impacts, and so our efforts, you know, have been focused on that. But certainly, the LMS isn't all hazards, and when we start that 18-month planning process, I think you'll see a little bit more focus on the various disasters. Of course, hurricanes and flooding being our two, you know, biggest. With regards to the smoke modeling, we did actually complete a smoke modeling project in conjunction with our defense grants a few years back, but I don't, I think that may have been specific to Whiting's efforts.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Chris Saul.
Sheila, good presentation. Next to the last slide, it talks about flood insurance rate maps. How does that differ from the FEMA flood maps?
It's the same.
Same.
Thing, yeah.
The process we're going through, will there be any benefit to our citizens as far as possible rate reduction?
I wish Karen was here to answer that. I think the answer is yes and no. I think in some cases, it could hurt, in some cases, it could help, but of course, you know, one of the things that Karen does is that letter of map amendment. And so anybody that feels like they are wrongfully mapped, you know, can go through that process with her to get the maps changed for their specific property. Tony, do you want to add to that?
Well, I think they're basically, their updates are based on historical information. So whatever events have occurred, then they update that information. So I think the answer is probably, in most cases, you would see if there were any change in area, it'd be based on some flood event that impacted a new area. As Sheila noted, for special areas that might get included into an overall area, there is the provision for a map amendment to be requested by an individual owner that might live on a knoll surrounded by a flood plain, for instance. They will consider those specific parcels to exempt them from that designation.
Mr. Chairman, that was my main reason for asking that question, the provision to get out of that flood plain, if you will, if you feel like you've been wrongly placed in it. We had one up in the J area, one of the highest elevations in the whole county, but he had like a retention pond in front of his house, so he ended up being in the flood zone. So as long as there's an option to, for the homeowner to be able to opt out. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Very good. Yes, sir.
Good morning. Rob Williamson, 7018 Summit Drive in Navarre. Was a good presentation. Just had a couple of questions about the timeline, and these might be Sheila questions, I'm not sure, but if I heard her correctly, we have the Holly by the Sea Master Plan, Stormwater Master Plan, that's going to get completed sometime in 2015, and then we have an 18-month grant process with LMS. So if I'm understanding that timeline correctly, then we would be in the mid-2017 time period before we would have recommendations and grant funding would become available to where we could actually start working on projects. Is that relatively accurate?
And while she's coming up, Rob, probably yes, but for the smaller things that the county can handle without that, we're not going to hang around waiting for the funding cycle. The things that we can do without assistance, we're going to proceed through. So it doesn't mean that we have to go all stop until...
And just to clarify that, and I could be misspeaking, there may be projects that we include in a grant application that will impact Holly by the Sea in this current HMGP cycle, but that 18-month process refers to those grant applications that actually get in the hopper before January 1. What I think is probably more reasonable to expect is that as a result of the Holly by the Sea Master Plan and those specific projects are prioritized, like Commissioner Melvin said, you know, what the county can do, those that are critical, what funding sources are available, we'll begin to work on those. And then for those that need to be funded with grants, we will prioritize them on the overall LMS list, and when the next grant opportunity becomes available, whether that be from community development block grant funds, this hazard mitigation grant funding, which follows a disaster, or other mitigation grant funding, we will plug those in. And so it's not going to be a quick, in my opinion, quick process for some of those larger drainage projects to be implemented. But I do believe that the county, you know, will get those done as funds are identified.
Mr. Chairman.
If I could, Rob. Excuse me. Yes, sir. Commissioner, do you have a thought?
Alternative answer there. Another source of funding for some of those projects, again, this is a master plan, goal of which is to identify specific projects that we can then work towards completing. Restore, NERDA, the other sources related to BP would be funding options for those individual projects as we move forward. The bulk of that money has not come yet. I saw on the wire this morning that BP has lodged an appeal of the gross negligence ruling that Judge Barbier issued a month or so ago. But we know we have, you know, four and a half million dollars in the pipeline from the transocean settlement. Those funds could be used for stormwater drainage projects, water quality improvement projects, and that's what we're looking for out of that Holly by the Sea Master Plan. Show us those individual projects that are going to have a measurable impact on stormwater, water quality, because all of that runs towards either the sound or the bay, you know. So that discharge from Holly by the Sea does affect our water quality down there. So it would be a very viable project for either restore or NERDA. And those are bigger pots of money, you know. We're talking about three to four million dollars in total for the HMGP allocation out of this most recent round of storms. The potential sources from BP, when you add in the direct allocation to the county and the state and the Gulf Coast Council, the numbers are staggering. So I think that's where we're going to look for most of our funding for those type projects.
Well, hopefully, the, that's one of the questions I had, was additional funding sources and Restore and NERDA, those are good ones. Hopefully, they'll score high enough going through the Restore Council process that they'll come out the other side and help. Of the 20 projects that are in the pipeline for this go-around, how many projects are in the District 4 area? Would that be two, the Airman Friedman Project and the Sunrise Drive intersection? Would those be the only two of the 20 in this go-around?
I think Sound Hammock is District 5. That's me.
I think Friedman. Is that Airman?
There's also Sandy Beach area in Navarre.
Okay. The Sunrise Drive one is one that I just want to put before the LMS and before this board. That intersection now does not require a 100-year flood event to be problematic. I'm sure most of you are familiar with that Sunrise Drive area and those two retention ponds on either side. You know, we can have our usual, you know, consistent summer rains, and that project becomes an issue. Last question would be related to the scoring. If Sheila could speak just briefly to how the LMS is scored, just so for my own edification and then anybody else listening, so we have an idea of how those projects are scored.
But before we do, I want to make sure you understand those ponds, because they're a source of great confusion to me as well. Those ponds belong to Holly by the Sea, and they sell capacity to Navarre Water and Sewer. They take, they take, so those are not holding ponds in the sense that they're designed to hold rainwater. Those are designed to be profit generators for Holly by the Sea, and they, those floods and overflows have to do with the interface between Holly by the Sea and Navarre Sewer in that when Holly by the Sea can't spray the spray field because it's raining two inches an hour, they didn't, they didn't communicate. And Navarre Water and Sewer kept pumping the clean affluent into those ponds, and they weren't spraying, and so they just go everywhere.
And I think that's a good example, though, that particular road right there. And I've spoken with Jim Wade with BDI, who's doing the Stormwater Master Plan about that. It seems like there would be an easy fix, because it's a road that just needs to be elevated a few feet. If you get another 18 inches or 24 inches, it seems like 95% of your problems with that access goes away. So it appears to be low-hanging fruit. We don't know, but that's what the study is going to show. So any of those projects like that, again, that are relatively easy to implement and will have a big impact, those are the ones that move the top of the list.
And thank you. Could you just maybe speak a little bit of the scoring and how that process works? Thank you.
I don't have the scoring form in front of me, but off the top of my head, the types of things that are considered in the scoring on a project-by-project basis includes items like how many repetitive loss properties are there in the area, how many hazards impact that area. For instance, if it's impacted by both hurricanes and wildfire, it may score higher than another project. Cost is a consideration factor. The time that it takes to complete projects is a factor. How critical is it for first responders? Does it have roadway blockages? There's just various items that get considered in scoring of a project. And those forms and the scoring key are located on the county LMS page for anyone to check out.
Yes, ma'am.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East, Milton. Have a couple of questions. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate place for them, but I'll ask, and then you can tell me. Back during Ivan, I had a lot of tree damage, a lot of trees blown down, and I was trying to find somebody to help me get them to the dump, or wherever you all were putting the trees and stuff, I forget what you call it. It was a problem because the companies that were hired by the county, I guess, to get rid of or take those to the place where they were supposed to be taken, couldn't come on to my property to get the trees that had been blown down. And my problem is, how do I find somebody that I can trust? And I would think that if the county had some kind of process for pre-certifying tree companies, and I know there are a lot of tree companies that come in from out of state at times like that, but if the county had a procedure for certifying tree people that could help the owner not only get the, you know, get the stuff to the street so that it can be picked up or then possibly taken where it's supposed to be taken, is this the appropriate place, is the mitigation?
It may touch the issue, and we can work with you on that. I understand what you're talking about, and it's a problem for a lot of people.
Right.
And for those at home watching, you're required to get it to the right of way to a pickup place. We are, we are not, and nor are our contractors required or permitted to go onto your private property to retrieve stuff. So you have to somehow get it out to a designated place, and we can help you with that.
But that's the big problem as far as the homeowner is concerned.
It can be a big problem, depending on, you know, the physical ability, the impairments, et cetera, the size of the trees, you know, when you lose a heritage oak, that's a real problem, because it takes pretty heavy equipment.
So do you have a procedure for...
I don't know. Mr. Walker, can you help with this?
I would think, if your question was, is the county certify contractors or have a recommended list? No, we don't.
Well, I know, but...
Well, the Better Business Bureau, your local chambers of commerce, those are the people I would turn to to look for help and that assistance, you know, get you to a reputable company that's not...
But to my knowledge, there isn't any such organization. I just wondered if you all knew of one and what the best procedure is. As far as the Better Business Bureau is concerned, if I pay $50 or whatever, they'll say, okay, I'm a reputable business. They don't necessarily have any information about me, but that doesn't help me as a homeowner trying to find a person that's going to help me get the stuff, the trees, off of my property and to the proper place.
If you would work with Mr. Walker after the meeting, I think that he can help you. I understand what you're saying, and that is not something that we have to have day in and day out, but it is part and parcel of what the emergency management organization, once that mechanism kicks in. Those are the sorts of details that, you know, they dot those i's and cross those t's, but it is not in place on a day-to-day basis.
Well, the same is true for roof repair. I had to have my roof repaired, and how are you going to find somebody that's...
And that's why I'm telling you, this is not a day-to-day. This is the one-off thing. And if you would, would get with Mr. Walker after the meeting, and he can explain it. But generally, this is not something that's in place 24/7. This is a service that we spin up when we activate the Emergency Operations Center, and those kinds of details are sorted through, and you have the, those... and those kinds of details are sorted through and you have the, those folks that come in here to prey on us, right along with the folks that are here to help, so.
Well, I know that Gulf Power has crews that come in and trim trees in the line, the power lines way, so I didn't know if there was something that you could also do as far as preventive tree.
Can I save you here?
It's just a matter of free enterprise as to whether or not you choose to hire. I spend money every year and a half. I've got a contractor that comes and takes care of my heritage oaks in my front yard to reduce their wind load, you know, and the profile they present, so.
Just a suggestion, there is a governing body out there. It's called the International Society of Arbiculture and you have to be a certified arborist to, to be the type of company that you'd be looking for. So the recommendation would be to hire companies that have a certified arborist on staff and then you'll know they're a reputable company.
Okay, thank you. Repetitive loss properties, I don't understand how that works.
Okay, we were going to ask you to get with Hunter on that. Repetitive loss is just what it says. Things are over and over again and we need to move this agenda forward, so if you would, we'll help you with those definitional problems because it's not something that's walking around knowledge to a lot of people, but Mr. Walker can explain that to you in detail. It's, it's not difficult. It's just houses that are, over and over and over again are damaged and those are repetitive properties and that kicks in.
So do we buy those properties from the people?
Well, there's several, there's several different ways and we're not going to spend 30 minutes going through it. So if you would, just get with Mr. Walker and Sheila. In fact, if you sit with Sheila for just a minute, she can probably help you. All right. The last item is an information item only and that's public hearing scheduled for 9:30 Thursday, October the 9th, 2014, and there's none. And the time is 10:30. Let's be back in place at 10:40 and we'll take a break. Let's be back in place at 10:40 and we'll take a break. Let's make a way back to our seats, please. Okay, we're back in session now after our break. Next up is Engineers Report. We have six items, five published and one add on. Mr. Blalock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The first item is a discussion of acceptance of a quick claim deed from Donald and Aleem Warwick for the common areas of the Genesis Park subdivision. This is a subdivision that was planted a number of years ago with a common area that is encompasses part of the Gulf Power Transmission Line easement. Sun Rose County has a need to utilize this property to address localized flooding in the Pace Patriot, the Pace substation of the Sheriff's Department there and the Pace Volunteer Fire Department. Mr. Warwick has agreed to a quick claim deed of that common area and we recommend acceptance on Thursday.
Okay, recommend we move this Thursday without objection.
Just a question. And I think Rogers pretty much explained it to me. I just wanted to make sure this wasn't one of those areas that, when he said years ago that it was going to be dedicated as a park and then never used or anything like that. So we do have usage of this property, this need for the property.
Yes, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be here if we did not have a need to address a drainage issue in the area.
Okay, that was my concern, thank you.
I recommend we move this Thursday without objection. Here and now it passes.
Item number two is a discussion of the Peter Prince East Apron Rehabilitation and Expansion with Panhandle and Payton Engraving in the amount of $457,457. This is an FAA project. It's a grant funded in the amount of $396,266 and a county match of $61,191. The board has previously approved the grant and this is award of the contract to proceed with that project.
I recommend we move this Thursday without objection. Here and now it passes.
Item number three is a discussion of approval of the preliminary plat for Cambria subdivision. This is a 170-lot subdivision that's located in Working District One.
All right. Less questions from the board. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here and now it passes.
And item number four is discussion of the preliminary plat for Holly Hills. This is a 55-lot subdivision in Working District Five.
Questions from the board. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here and now it passes.
And item number five is the construction plans for this aforementioned Holly Hills subdivision.
Questions from the board. I recommend we move this Thursday without objection. Here and now it passes.
Item number six, last week I was invited to attend a regional shore protection round table with the seven county representatives of the coastal counties from Escamie County over to Gulf, including the city of Destin. This was initiated by Jim Trefilio. He's the Coastal Management Director with the Oaklus County TDC. Essentially what we were talking about in this meeting is what is a federal beach renourishment project? What does it take to go about getting federal funding and designation? And then how it would relate to the current projects that are ongoing. Each of the counties and governmental entities were allowed to update our project. As you know, Pensacola Beach is approximately a year ahead of us and they do have their permit for this, I'll say, second round of renourishment. And Navara Beach, we anticipate getting that permit sometime this fall with funding from the state, hopefully in July of next year. The discussions that we held would not be relevant to any of these ongoing projects. Certainly there's opportunities to economies of scale such as, you know, mobilization and remobilization with Pensacola Beach, but as far as an overall regional approach, we're going to be talking about the one down the road, the one that's seven to 10 years out. And essentially that bodes well for the process that the federal government is going to require for us to get federal designation. And so I just wanted to let you know that we are in discussions with the other governmental entities and we'll proceed to talk with you. Of course, with that, there's going to be regional opportunities to fund the studies and that. I don't have those numbers yet, but certainly we'll be coming back to the board with those discussions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Blalock. Item next up is the Public Services Committee, Commissioner Litcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is discussion of the 7th Annual Adopt-a-thon, which will be Saturday, October 18th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the shelter located at 4451 Pine Forest Road in Milton. For this special event, there is no fee to adopt a cat or dog and a spay neuter voucher will be provided at no cost for any unaltered animal. Attendees who wish to adopt a new pet and currently have pets at home should bring proof of rabies vaccination for each animal. Pets on leashes with the current rabies tag attached are welcome to attend. The opening ceremony is at 9:00 a.m. with colors presented by the U.S. Naval Sea Cadets Whiting Division. We don't need any action on this Thursday, it's just information.
Just informational, we're just inviting everyone to come. All right, sir.
That will conclude Public Services.
Thanks, sir. Next, Public Works Committee, Commissioner Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one item today, a discussion of requests from Bill Walther Construction for an encroachment agreement for a 1.4-foot encroachment into the drainage easement on Lot Two, Block D, in the 12 Oaks subdivision. If you look at your supporting documents, you'll see that he owns the lot next door. He encroached a little bit over a foot and he's willing to move that over just a foot when they build the new house. That way we still have the same distance that we need. Mr. Whitfield, would you like to add anything to that?
Just that we've looked at this from Public Works and we don't have any objection to the county attorney's office providing an encroachment agreement for this. We feel like we can maintain the storm drain that's in place there regardless of the 1.4-foot encroachment.
Thank you, Ms. Whitfield.
If there's no other discussion, I'd like to move to Thursday without objection.
Here and now it passes.
That concludes my report.
Thanks, sir. Next is Budget and Financial Management, Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, with the board's indulgence, we've got 24 items, quite a few of them are carryforward items to clean up the end of the year to the new fiscal year and with the board's permission, I'd like to, for item four, five, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 16 through 20, and 22, these are all, again, carryforward items of already approved items.
Mm-hmm.
And be all right, I'd just like to move them to Thursday without objection.
I don't have any problems with that. Go through the numbers again, please, slowly, so we can check them off.
Item four, five, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 16 through 20, and 22. They are all available on our website and, of course, on a hard copy for the public.
Okay, and 22 was the last item.
Yes, sir, 22.
All right. All right, I recommend we move items.
Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East, Milton. Does this mean this is money that you didn't spend in last year's budget and you're moving it forward to next year's budget?
That's exactly what we're doing, yes, ma'am.
And could you give us a sum of that amount of money?
Well, if you wanted to sit there and add it up, you could do it for yourself. It's quite a bit of money, but the total amount is just money that it does, it's going to be used. What this means is that it's earmarked for whatever it's earmarked for and we haven't completed it in this budget cycle, so we're carrying it forward into the next budget cycle. It's still going to be spent for what it's supposed to be spent for, it's just going to be in the next year's budget.
So it's not money that you're going to do something else with?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Not unless it's so noted. Now, there's maybe one in there, I don't remember which one it is, that was going to be surplus, but unless, most of them are carried forward to complete the projects they were approved for and if it's a surplus, then you'll see in there that it says to put it back in the general fund.
So it's not money you found that you can do something else with?
Generally, no.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I called out all the items that were either new money, new spending, or reserve money.
Understand.
All right. Item number one, then, discussion of budget amendment 2015-001 in the amount of $1,223,996 to carry forward the future capital fund balance in the capital fund and place it in reserves. I'll move that to Thursday unless there's any discussion without objection.
Here and now it passes.
Item two is discussion of budget amendment 2015-002 in the amount of $51,897 to transfer funds from the capital fund to the general fund to purchase three one-half-ton pickup trucks at $17,299 each for the building inspection make department as approved at the August 28, 2014 Board of County Commissioners regular meeting. I move that to Thursday without objection.
Here and now it passes.
Item three is discussion of budget amendment 2015-003 in the amount of $275,197 to carry forward funds for the Holly-by-the-C drainage study in the Road and Bridge Fund. I'll move that one to Thursday without objection.
Here and now it passes.
Items four and five, we've taken care of. Item six is discussion of budget amendment 2015-006 in the amount of $33,806 to re-recognize the State of Florida Elections Grant and a 15% county match for Help Americans Vote Act, the HAVA, requirements in the general fund. And I move that to Thursday without objection.
Here and now it passes.
The next items, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14, we've dispensed of. Item 15 is discussion of budget amendment 2015-015 in the amount of $15,000 to fund the contract with Pegasus Engineering from the general fund to provide assistance to the local mitigation strategy associated with the project review and prioritization of the April flood event HMPG allocation as approved at the September 25, 2014 Board of County Commissioners regular meeting. Unless there's discussion on that, we talked about it earlier with Sheila. I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Here and now it passes.
All right, item 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20, we've already dispensed of. This brings us to item 21, discussion of budget amendment 2015-021 in the amount of $1,187,43 to carry forward unspent funds for the repair and upgrade to the grounding of the South Tower Building at $5,922 as approved at the March 27, 2014 Board of County Commissioners regular meeting with the remaining $1,181,043 to the ICP Reserve account in the general fund. I move that to Thursday without objection.
Here and now it passes.
Item 22 is discussion of budget amendment 2015-022 in the amount of $108,609 to carry forward unspent funds for re-roofing the Gulf Breeze Library Building as approved at the July 10, 2014 Board of County Commissioners regular meeting in the general fund. And I missed that one, I guess, in my earlier review.
That's okay.
So I'll move that without objection.
Here and now it passes.
Item 23, we've dispensed, item, I'm sorry, item 23, we do need to take care of.
Right.
Discussion of budget amendment 2015-023 in the amount of $1,585,678, excuse me, to carry forward fund balances in the district recreation funds and place it in reserve. I move that to Thursday without objection.
Here and now it passes.
And final item is discussion of county expenditure and check register, which I've signed and sent to your office. So I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Here and now it passes.
Mr. Chairman, that completes this report.
Thank you. Public Forum, anything to come for the board?
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East, Milton. I'd like to know what the status is of the Air Force's use of the Boris, Blackwater Forest. Where does that stand?
Ms. Cantu, we don't, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
You go around here and I'm.
I'm sorry.
We haven't had any kind of briefing on that. It's a state issue, it's between the Air Force and the state.
Well, they had asked for our opinions about it and we said we didn't want it done, so I just wondered if you all had heard what the status is. Could you check, could you have someone check on the status?
I'll get with Representative Broxen and see if he has any information on it since he is our state representative.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other inputs from the public, we are adjourned.